And his family for their unwavering support. Mr. Solomon provided me with my family for their unwavering support at High School, and his family for their unwavering support. Mr. Solomon provided me with my first BPS position as a community cheer coach, and then later hired me as a teacher and eventually a school counselor. Mr. Solomon encouraged me from a young age to pursue educational leadership, and his belief in me is the reason I am in this position today. Also, thank you to Ms. Price, Bravard Virtual School Principal. It's hard to believe that I was your cheerleader, an economics and U.S. history student turned principal. Your support over the years has meant more than you know. Thank you to my family for always supporting my dreams and aspirations. And finally, thank you to Mrs. Gonzalez, Principal of Titusville High School. I am so proud of the milestones that we accomplished in my time as your AP of Curriculum. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to lead alongside of you. I have loved every minute of my time as a Terrier, and I look forward to seeing all that my Terrier family will accomplish this year and beyond. And to my new Viper family, which some of them are in the crowd somewhere tonight, I cannot think, I cannot wait to see what we accomplish in this next chapter. I could not be prouder to lead Viper Nation as your new principal.
So next, I'd like to recognize Danielle Polley for her promotion to officially principal at Gardendale Separate Day School.
So I wanted to start by saying thank you to my family, who have been always giving their support, chopping everything when I need, the kids picked up because I'm still at school, and always being there for me. Thank you to all the educators I've worked with over the years, teachers, administrators, support staff. If it wasn't for you guys, I wouldn't be where I am now. Thank you to the board and Dr. Rendell for giving me this opportunity to be at such an amazing school. And to my Gardendale family that I know we are continuing to grow, and I am so proud of where we've come in the past three years, and looking forward to continuing to rise with you.
So next, we'd like to call up Martha McFarland. She's being promoted from one position at Viera High School to another, from 10-month assistant principal to 12-month assistant principal.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, School Board members, Dr. Rendell and distinguished guests. I would like to start by saying how grateful I am for this opportunity and for the trust that has been placed in me. This promotion just isn't about my work. It's about a reflection of the support, the mentorship, and the teamwork that I have been fortunate to be surrounded with. To my colleagues, my Viera colleagues, my Hawks, and Principal Agate, I wanted to say thank you for challenging me, thank you for inspiring me, and making every day a chance to grow. To the district leadership, thank you for seeing my potential and for giving me this opportunity to grow at the next level. And to my boys and my family, just thank you for everything. Without you guys, I wouldn't be here. So I'm excited to take on this responsibility, and I'm excited to see where we can take our school to the next level. And of course, go Hawks![222.12][222.12](APPLAUSE)
So and finally, we want to congratulate Kristi Shorts on her promotion to Assistant Principal at Endeavor Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm truly honored to accept the role of Assistant Principal at Endeavor Elementary. I want to begin by expressing my deepest gratitude to our Superintendent, Dr. Rendell, our board, our Director, Mr. Reed, and my very proud Panther Principal, Ms. Murphy, for entrusting me with this position. Being part of the Endeavor team is a privilege. Our school is filled with passionate educators and absolutely incredible students. I'm excited to continue working alongside all of you to support our mission and help every child thrive. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm very proud to serve Endeavor Elementary.[282.41][282.41](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could now take a break for some pictures?
Sure.
You said if they did that, you would bring her back. And now the goalpost has moved again. Mrs. Calhoun has the right, has the qualifications, and more importantly, or most importantly, has the passion to teach in a county where she graduated. Yet, the decision has been made to choose political motivation over students' need and purposefully misrepresent the facts in doing so. Ms. Calhoun should be on this agenda. Ms. Calhoun should be in the classroom. There is a vacancy at Satellite Beach High School that Ms. Calhoun should be in, and I would urge you to do the right thing and put students over politics. Thank you.
Vanessa Skipper, Christopher Higginbottom, Bill Pearlman.
Good evening, Dr. Rendell, members of the school board. My name is Vanessa Skipper, and I proudly serve the educators of Brevard County as Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I stand before you to address a glaring omission from the Instructional Staff Recommendations F9. Teachers across the county will tell you that I often say I stand on the shoulders of giants, those who came before me in this union representing educators, negotiating contracts, and standing in solidarity. One of those giants, former BFT Fran Baer, shared this powerful reflection on the unjust treatment of Melissa Calhoun, who should be on the agenda tonight. With this decision comes a threat to every teacher. According to the superintendent's comment, parent support trumps student achievement and teaching excellence. A parent has a problem with a kid at home, blames it on the teacher, complains to a board member, and the teacher is gone despite the recommended action from an authorized third party. If a principal wants to improve their school's test scores and hire a competent, qualified teacher, is school-based management an empty policy? Where there is a violation of policy, procedure, or law, a consequence may be appropriate. But due process and just cause demand a reasonable consequence. Is banning a highly effective educator like Ms. Calhoun from teaching again a reasonable penalty? Absolutely not. Dr. Rendell, this decision has done more to erode the trust and confidence of your teaching staff around the district more than you realize. You issued a letter of reprimand, a reasonable response, but then you chose to non-renew her contract. At the same time, you allowed her to continue teaching through the rest of the school year with the same student still in her classroom. Then, after the Florida Education Practices Commission, a third-party panel unanimously voted to let her keep her teaching certificate, you still refuse to rehire her. This is speaking out of both sides of your mouth. Even more troubling is the inconsistency in your standard of redemption. You've invited a keynote speaker who is a convicted felon, still on probation for organized burglary, to fund a meth addiction to address both students and new teachers about transformation and second chances. Yet, you refuse to extend even a fraction of that grace to Ms. Calhoun, a dedicated professional with a record of excellence. Your teachers are watching, including all those new hires you brought in for the New Teacher Academy. To the school board, you have the authority to direct the school superintendent. You also have the chance to do the reasonable thing here, direct him to rehire Ms. Calhoun. Mr. Thomas, thank you for standing up for just cause and reasonable penalty. Ms. Campbell, you said there is no reason why, depending on their decision, Ms. Calhoun wouldn't necessarily go back and apply for a job in Brevard, and those doors are open. Now is the time to stand by that statement. Ms. Wright, Mr. Susan, Mr. Trent, you also have the opportunity to do the right thing. The teachers and the larger community, many of whom who can put politics aside are...
Christopher Higginbottom, Bill Pearlman, Jennifer Nagy.
Hello, my name is Chris Higginbottom, and I'm going to speak about G1. I just want to take a moment to say thank you, guys, for the board. If no one else says thank you, I know you guys got a big task ahead of you and your shoulders are broad, and that's basically what I want to talk about today. I know the speaker they're speaking about with Dr. Rendell. Just so everybody knows, that is a nationally renowned speaker, and he talks about transformation. Most of the colleges he goes and speaks to. So, as I went to FIT as a member of this school board, employee of the school board, I appreciated the speaker we had there. Dr. Rendell, I'm the one who texted you. Thank you for your motivation. That was my cellphone. With that being said, G1, it is about cellphones. I know that's a big topic, especially as the school year starts, and I just want to say I hope you guys can stay strong on the district's cellphone policy. In this age of constant digital distractions, our schools must remain a place of focus, encouragement, and genuine learning. Research shows that unrestricted cellphone use in the classroom harms academic performance, increases anxiety, and disrupts the learning environment. And I hope you guys can let the administration enforce the cellphone policy. I know there's going to be a lot of pressure there. By maintaining clear boundaries, you protect instructional time, encourage social interaction, and reduce the distractions and cyber risk. So I'm going to urge you, some may urge you to have more flexibility, but strong policies create strong structure, and strong structure leads to success. Teachers, parents, and even most students appreciate this new cellphone policy. I know it's state law, K through 8, but this board going all the way to high school, I think, is the right move and the right direction. I'm a father of three. All three kids do go to Brevard Public Schools. Brevard County has always prioritized student achievement and well-being, so I encourage you to stay firm in this policy and uphold this policy because our students deserve a school environment where learning comes first, and that's what this policy will bring. With that being said, I just want to take a second to congratulate all the administrators that were appointed. I think that's a great thing, and we are doing great things in this school. Thanks to this board and what they are doing. I'll just yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Bill Pearlman, Jennifer Nagy, Samantha Kirbin.
Good evening, I'm Bill Pearlman. Tonight, you are approving revisions to Policy 5517.01 regarding bullying and harassment, but the superintendent and this board have shown no commitment to a workplace that is safe, secure, and free from bullying and harassment. Previously, some of you stated the reason you did not renew Ms. Calhoun's contract because you were concerned the state might rescind her teaching license. You looked us in the eye. You said you'd reconsider Ms. Calhoun's reinstatement if the state cleared her to teach. The state cleared her to teach, and now you've broken your word. Consider how the community feels about being lied to. This is political, it is dishonest, and it's harassment. There are at least four factors that demonstrate you are in violation of your own bullying and harassment policy. You've inflicted psychological distress on Ms. Calhoun. You've created an intimidating, hostile, and offensive educational environment. You've caused discomfort and humiliation, and you have unreasonably interfered with Ms. Calhoun's ability to participate. This is not about parental rights, even though you like to pretend that it is. The parent who complained knew what was happening, presumably for years, because the student was using their preferred name for years. After the school administration spoke with Ms. Calhoun, she had a conversation with the student and told them that going forward, they would be called by their legal name. It could have ended there. It should have ended there. This is ideological extremism and abuse of power. In addition to lying to us by refusing to reinstate Ms. Calhoun, you're going against the recommendation of the Education Practices Commission and your own HR department. Dr. Rendell prefers retaliation over kindness and empathy, politics over the interests of students. Is that the culture you want for Brevard schools? If you let the superintendent stay on this path of retaliation, it becomes your path. So please, make a motion tonight. Instruct the superintendent to allow Melissa Calhoun to continue outstanding service to Brevard students and help pave the path for kindness, empathy, academic excellence, second chances, not ideological extremism, retaliation, political theater. Brevard deserves better.
Jennifer Nagy, Samantha Kirbin, Kelly Kirbin.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Nagy. I'm an Edgewood mom. I've met most of you board members at Edgewood events or just around the district at other events. Mr. Susan is actually my district representative and has worked with me over the years on a number of things. Back when my boys were little in Boy Scouts, he even met with them, it was during COVID. You did a Zoom telecom thing with them, and the boys were so excited because you ended up asking them questions. And they, I don't even remember if it was about water fountains or playground recess time or something. You asked them something, and they got to give you feedback. And they were so excited because you were like, I don't know, let's call, at that time it was Dr. Mullins, and let's call and ask him. And you called him up, and their eyes got the size of half dollars because you were calling and actually taking action on something they'd said. And they felt like they were bigger than life. And you and I had talked earlier today about the wireless communications devices, and you said you were going to talk to your fellow board members because we had talked about there was a, what I saw as a potential oversight, that we really need staff members to be able to approve if there are educational purposes that they would like to be able to use wireless communication devices, that being outside laptops or cellphones or whatever purposes need those devices to be used, and that that is currently not in your, I don't want to call it law or whatever policy is going on. And I'm hoping that you all had a chance to discuss that before tonight's vote and that you do make those policy changes because staff members need to have that discretion. And one of the things you said to me earlier on the phone, and I'm hoping that you can reiterate this from the dais tonight, is that staff members aren't going to lose their pensions because you and I had had a conversation about that, that there were staff members that were truly concerned that they were going to lose their pensions if a student, like, had to use the cellphone because in AP Physics, for example, you have to film as part of the AP Physics curriculum in slow motion. That's something you can't do on a district-provided laptop. So, yes, a cellphone can actually do that. So either the school district can go out and spend additional funds to purchase antiquated technology, or we could simply allow a cellphone to shoot this little video to be able to be used for the AP curriculum. These are like the little things that I'm hoping teachers can use because right now the teachers are worried that they're not going to be able to use this, and they might lose their jobs over it. And I don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Samantha Kirbin, Kelly Kirbin, and Melissa Calhoun. Samantha Kirbin, Kelly Kirbin, Melissa Calhoun.
Hello, it has been a while since I've seen you guys, but hi. I am not happy to be back. So, this is about G1, the, what is that again? WCD policy. I think that you guys should either remove it or revise it heavily. Better to just remove it for high school. We are high schoolers, not middle schoolers. We can drive, we can do all of that, but we can't use our cellphones, not even during lunch, to communicate with each other or anything of the such. Anyways, you are not properly setting up these kids for adulthood, which is your job. Your job is to make a curriculum that can support and push high schoolers to being a fully functional adult. And by limiting cellphone uses or any kind of device, wireless communication device, is hindering that because regardless of what you think or what you want, technology is always going to be a part of life. That's the future. You can't deny it, you should embrace it. Teaching kids how to properly go through the internet in an educational manner is what you should be doing, not limiting it and making it to where people can get fired for their jobs for prioritizing using a device because they never got to learn how to properly regulate device use in a school where school doesn't have that kind of real-world consequences. People could lose their livelihood because they do not know how to self-regulate phone use or social media or any of that because they didn't learn that in school. It has always been, a phone is always a temptation. That's the reality. But in school, at least, you'd be able to learn the consequences of prioritizing your phone instead of your school by getting a bad grade or failing a class, not losing your income, your job, not flunking college. College is expensive. People could waste their scholarships because now they have freedom, and they do not know how to regulate. It is a problem, and it will be a problem, and even more so if you keep this policy. It should be up to the teacher. And the state law states that it's K through 8, not K through 12. Thank you and good night.
To echo her sentiments, I'd also rather be home. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about G1, the wireless communication devices. First, I understand that the new legislation under DeSantis ties the board's hands in terms of K to 8, although that does exclude our junior, senior schools. Instead, I'll be talking about what this policy does in our high schools. While I agree that cellphones should not be used in classrooms without teachers' permission, the policy change does not just affect cellphones. Instead, it includes all technology devices, including personal computers, iPads, and Kindles. First, the purpose of school is to prepare our students for the future, and this policy does the opposite. Whether our students head off to college, the military, or the workforce, technology will be part of their day-to-day life, and teaching them to use it appropriately should be a standard. I guess I should be excited to see this district invest money into textbooks for every student so they can do their homework or study during lunch, but we both know you can't afford to do that. And with students being unable to use their devices, they're being denied access to their education. Titusville High School, as an example, keeps dual enrollment students on campus on days they don't go to Eastern Florida, and they just sit there doing what exactly? They're not in a classroom with a computer cart, but they also can't use their personal computers to do their college work either. It's like the board forgets that virtually all curriculum is digital these days. And despite popular belief, you do not issue a laptop for each student, and the laptops you do have aren't powerful enough to run all of the software our students use, especially for my daughter in digital art. Next, this policy unfairly discriminates against our population with disabilities. And before you say, quote, "While we have IEPs and 504 exceptions", let me give you an example of what that doesn't cover. During lunch, students have the ability to pull out a book and read, but Samantha doesn't have that option. For books to be accessible, she needs them to be able to listen in audio format, which is now banned, or she needs to use an e-reader where she can manipulate the font size and brightness, but that is banned too. In a classroom where it is part of the curriculum, she can use her IEP, but at lunch, when she's reading for pleasure, that wouldn't be covered under an IEP. That is blatant discrimination. And this is ignoring the fact that students with IEPs and 504s already have to unfairly out themselves as being different, which heightens their risk of being bullied and experiencing anxiety. At West Shore, students hold the majority of their clubs and activities during lunch, or what they call "power hour". One of Samantha's clubs uses an online app that school computers can't even support if they had access to them. And unless the school board plans on buying their books and maps, which start at about $50 each, their club may not even be able to continue, and they're not alone. Stop calling this a ban on cellphones because it's not. It's a ban on education accessibility and just proves how far removed the majority of you are from the realities of what our high schoolers are dealing with. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Rendell, and members of the community. My name is Melissa Calhoun, and I'm here to address Item 9, Instructional Staff Recommendations. I'm here before you tonight as a speech and debate coach, a mock trial coach, Beta Club sponsor, first priority sponsor, and peer mentor, as well as a BPS parent, and yes, a highly effective BPS instructor. It's my hope that tonight I can offer a sound reflection on the practice of education to both you and the 73 newly-appointed teachers. Credibility matters. According to John Hattie, teacher credibility has an effect size of 0.9. In other words, it has a significant positive impact on student achievement. In the book Visible Learning for Literacy, it says the following about teacher credibility. Teachers can compromise their credibility when they violate trust, make a lot of errors, sit in the back of the room, and lack a sense of urgency. They compromise their credibility, particularly if they are not seen to be fair. Now, teacher credibility doesn't happen in a vacuum. It flourishes only in systems where leadership values protects and uplifts the profession. If we want these 73 newly-appointed educators to become teachers of high impact, then they must be treated as professionals. That responsibility begins not in the classroom, but here at the district level. You set the tone, you shape the culture. We cannot build high-impact classrooms if our teachers fear that they too can be sacrificed on the altar of political ideology. We cannot promote excellence if we silence experience. So for these 73 teachers, I ask you to commit to transparency, commit to professionalism, and commit to protecting our teachers. You can begin this process by hosting a town hall. This would allow teachers, students, and parents to come together to speak openly and respectfully about the issues that plague our current system. It's a small step in repairing the trust with your veteran teachers. When those teachers feel safe, they are empowered to be marigold teachers and mentors to the 73 newly-appointed instructors, as I was for our Emerging Teacher of the Year. Because ultimately, when teachers thrive, students succeed. And when leadership leads with integrity, credibility follows. Thank you.
Angela F. F. Carwana, Kai Snyder, Jennifer Hopkins.
It's kind of nice following Melissa, the podium's at the right height. I love public education, and I'm particular public educators. I'm speaking to Item 9. My grandmother taught public schools in Mississippi until the state shut down public schools rather than grant all students an equal education by just desegregating them. She then taught in the only schools available to her, private schools, but she instilled a love of public education that has never left me. I know your political party creates outrage for theater. I promise you, I stand as a member of the Democratic National Committee because of my outrage at antics like yours. I don't have to create a thing. Mr. Rendell, everyone saw your initial statement echoed by Megan Wright that the only reason you are not renewing Melissa Calhoun's contract at the end of the school year was because her certificate might be up for review and might be pulled. Katie Campbell even gave a saccharin-laden smirk, saying she can definitely reapply if her certificate is left intact. It was reviewed, and it was not canceled, and you were big mad. So you moved the goalpost, denying our county a highly effective teacher because of your politics. Your statement was honestly the most ridiculous piece of theater ever. Your own investigation belies just about every word. In your statement, you said that Calhoun knowingly and repeatedly participated in gender reaffirmation without the parent's knowledge. Yet, your own investigation showed that the very moment that it was brought to Calhoun's attention, that the name she was commonly used for a student was not, in fact, on some ridiculous permission form, she stopped using it and notified the student she would no longer use the preferred, non-gendered name. Unless you are prepared to fire every coach and teacher who actually does repeatedly and intentionally use any name not on their student permission slip, you must reinstate Calhoun. The rule does not specify gender-affirming names. It says any names not on the form. Lord, how much of our tax dollars do you insist on spending defending lawsuits that you could avoid? You brag about standing firmly on the side of parental rights. We all know you only stand firmly on the side of parents on the right. Gene publicly stated that Brevard is a conservative district, and non-conservative parents should take their students elsewhere. Last meeting, he thought it would be cute to wear a cheek knockoff of a MAGA slogan on his damn head. Just stop politicizing our schools. Look at the slogan behind you. Your commitment is to serve every student with excellence as the standard. It doesn't mention parents. I can't even think of the last time you mentioned what was best for students. Instead, you say you prioritize the law. You know, anybody here remember 1970? I do. It was the law that public schools in Florida remained segregated in 1970. Brevard didn't desegregate until August of 1970. We have an elementary school, Spencer B. Holland, named after one of the staunchest defenders of parental rights in keeping schools segregated. I'll just bet that school board was as determined to prioritize the law, the trust of their families, and the rights of their parents to remain segregated too.
Hello there, school board. I'm Kai Snyder from Glora Middle School, and I'm here to talk about 5136, the wireless ban. You say it's about phones, but it does not, it includes other devices like Apple Watches, Kindles, and these devices are very helpful for students. I am someone who is dyslexic, and the Kindle allows me to adjust the font so I'm able to read better and understand what I need to continue with my classes. Then, also, the idea that phones are distracting is true, but the problem with banning phones is there will always be games. Even if they're playing games on the phones, they will always be playing the games on the computers. They will still be there. Then, cyberbullying is a big problem, but also getting rid of the phone does not really solve the problem. It just postpones the problem to either be happened in person or to when they get home. Then, my school used to have an early announcement where students would film themselves, talk about their announcements. They're unable to do that now because they are not able to use their phones. The phones also allow them to use apps like Focus to get to their classes on time, know what homeworks and class periods they need to get to next. Thank you.
Jennifer Hopkins, Rochelle Jolly, Susan Pinsky.
Good evening, my name is Jen. I'm a longtime resident of Brevard County and a graduate of Brevard County Schools. I'm here to speak to Agenda Item G, public hearing. The purpose of these policies is to ensure transparency, accountability for the board, and participation from the community. The expectation of transparency is that information regarding budgets, agendas, and policies is made easily accessible and comprehensible to everyone. I do not believe that this board has succeeded in meeting this expectation. For example, you've been unwilling to share details regarding the budget. You have dismissed comments that don't align with your narrative as being uninformed without providing the information. Another example of the lack of transparency is the hot firing of Melissa Calhoun. This board clearly stated more than once that if her license was upheld by the state, she would be welcome to reapply, and her reinstatement would be considered. Based on Dr. Rendell's statement after her settlement was reached, it's clear that this board never had the intention of doing this. You are dishonest, you misled Ms. Calhoun and all of the students that she should be teaching. Her story is national news, so you misled the whole country. This board must be willing to accept accountability for the decisions that you make. You should be learning from your mistakes, welcoming scrutiny, and following through on your commitments. You have failed to do all of this, and you have broken any trust that this community had in you. You must understand that the students and the teachers determine when you've made a mistake. It's not up to you, and honestly, it's not supposed to be up to the parents or the community either. either. We're here to help you help... I'm sorry. We're here to help hold you accountable to them. It is very difficult for the students, teachers, and community to participate in the decision-making process. The protocol for these meetings is relegated public comment to an incredibly narrow focus. There's no actual discussion, no room for questions. We don't want to come in here and just complain in your direction while you dismiss us. We don't want an adversarial relationship. We want collaboration, and frankly, we want better decision-making. We're making two specific requests. First, retain Melissa Calhoun's loyalty. Show the teachers and students you make decisions with integrity. Second, host an impartial town hall. This Board shouldn't shut away from answering questions from the community. Fulfilling these requests will begin to rebuild trust. Thank you.
The first table, somebody over there.
Oh.
Yeah.
I would go to... Okay.
Good evening. Rochelle Jolly, longtime Brevard resident, mom of many, like, too many. I'm going to speak to the instructional recommendations. Instructional recommendations are an important part of your job, choosing teachers who will teach our children to pass the Almighty Fast Test so that our schools can receive funding or passing the AP courses so they can receive college credit, our supposed signs of a successful teacher. Why then are you not recommending a teacher who has done just that? Dr. Marky is saying it's because there was a conscious and deliberate decision to engage with gender affirmation without parental knowledge. Megs, did you know that he said this? Did you know that names have gender? Gee, I'm sure you recognize the flaw in this logic. Kat, Johnny, I pose a couple of questions. What do names mean? In one way or another, each of you have made it clear that you align yourselves with Christianity. Here's another question. Which of the names in the Scriptures do you like to use when you refer to our Lord and Savior? Is it wonderful, almighty, master, teacher, shiloh, everlasting father, counselor, advocate, anointed, creator, deliverer, bread of life, judge, the light, the way, mediator, messenger, Messiah, Emmanuel, redeemer, rock, son of God, only begotten, comforter, friend, cornerstone, alpha and omega, holy one of Israel, comforter, king of kings, king of the Jews, king of heaven, son of man, good shepherd, exemplar, Jehovah, prince of peace, the lamb of God, the truth, Savior, Christ, Jesus. These are just a few of the names that refer to our Lord and Savior found in the Scriptures. The majority of these names do not use to describe Jesus are gender-neutral. Names do not have a gender, so your accusation toward Ms. Calhoun is false. As a Christian myself, none of these names changes who and what Jesus is to me. So this rule of parental permission for a name is just a weapon you have used to punish a teacher and students, to push your extremist agenda, not to mention that you broke your word and that you would reinstate Ms. Calhoun if she kept her teaching license. You should review this decision to not have Ms. Calhoun... to have Ms. Calhoun on the list of recommended instructors. BPS deserves teachers and a proven track record of success.
Ava Gallo. Julia Cohen.
Thank you, Board, Superintendent, Board members, and members of the community for this opportunity to address you tonight. I am here to speak about Agenda Item 8, Instructional Recommendations. Today, I ask to speak to your heart. I've tried to speak to your heads, and I hear all these incredible speeches that are also trying to appeal to your intellect and reason. But today, I stand here as a mom, a proud and passionate mom who values my children's education as the second most important part of their lives besides their family. School is where the groundwork is laid, their foundation is established, and behaviors are printed upon them. These vital experiences define them and help guide them to become, hopefully, extraordinary contributors to our future. Trust me, you will need them as you age. We all will. I am a doctor by day and care deeply for my patients, whatever side of the political spectrum they live on, however they come to me, much like teachers. My job is to provide exceptional care always, not negotiable. I am here tonight because I cannot stand by quietly as you take steps to keep an extraordinary educator from teaching my child in addition to disrupting her career. She is one of the best, Mrs. Melissa Calhoun. I ask, as I speak, to pause and listen to your heart and internal voice for a moment. Take a moment and recall your best teacher and some indelible mark they left. Pause and take a moment, as a parent, when a teacher touched your life or the life of your child in a remarkable way. I am in awe in this room because some of those incredible teachers are behind me, and I have to stand up and speak out. Pause and feel the pain of my child, whose heart is broken, for my child who will not have Mrs. Calhoun in her senior year, her extraordinary presence as a teacher and inspiring coach. Please pause and feel that remarkable loss. Now multiply that loss by hundreds of students. You are depriving of this phenomenal educator. For what endpoint? One angry parent, one rule or law broken without clear parameters? Think of the role modeling you are at this point demonstrating. Please pause. I wear this necklace as I do sometimes. These are portraits my kids made in art school from an art teacher that changed their lives, who impacts them every day. I'm holding this and begging for you to hear my heart.
Thank you so much for your time.
Ava Gallo. Julia Cohen. Gregory Ross.
My name is Ava Gallo, and I'm speaking on Agenda Item G1. I'm a junior at Satellite High School and also a dual-enrollment student at Eastern Florida State College. I'm here tonight to share why I believe it's important for students, especially those in advanced learning programs or with learning differences, to have access to their own personal devices, specifically tablets and computers during the school day. Why personal devices matter? In today's world, having your own device is not just a luxury, it's essential for academic success and preparation for the future. Personally, I rely on my iPad with a keyboard and apple pencil to take notes, complete assignments, and conduct research. I have ADHD and dyslexia, so digital note-taking for me is critical, both at Eastern and Satellite. It helps me to organize my thoughts, use accessibility tools, and keep pace with my coursework in a way that a pen and paper simply cannot. There are also some scheduling challenges that come along with banning personal devices. I travel directly between Eastern Florida State College and Satellite High School Monday through Thursday. For me and other students in similar situations, it's impractical and sometimes impossible to drop off devices at home during the day. My schedule often requires for me to work on assignments and research in multiple locations, not just the classroom. I also want to touch on the importance of personal devices in science research. I'm heavily involved in my school's science research program, which means I use my device before school, after school, on weekends, and at home. My research logbook has to be digital because handwriting is a challenge for me. School-issue computers cannot be taken home, which makes them impossible for my research needs. Next, the compatibility issues. Many of the tools that helped me to be successful, considering my learning struggles, are Apple-based, but school devices are Microsoft-based. This creates compatibility problems that slow down my work and make collaboration harder. I understand and support the new phone policies about no phones in class besides no phones at lunch. I also understand concerns about students using hotspots, but without phone access during the day, this concern is already addressed. For students like me in dual enrollment, science research, or with learning differences, personal devices such as tablets and computers are not distractions, they are lifelines to our education. I respectfully ask the Board to reconsider the restrictions on personal laptops and computers... I mean, sorry, laptops and tablets for students in these situations. I would be happy to discuss more about my experiences and work together to find solutions that meet both student needs and school goals. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you.
Gregory Ross. Kelly Columbertti.
Good evening, Superintendent Rendell and members of the Board. I am here today to speak on Agenda Item G.2, which addresses how these meetings are meant to function, grounded in transparency and meaningful public participation. But what does that really mean if those principles are ignored when they matter most? This Board stood before the public and promised that if the state cleared Ms. Calhoun to teach again, her reinstatement would be reconsidered. That has happened. The state cleared her. She has done everything asked of her, but instead of action, there has been silence. Instead of accountability, delay. And instead of transparency, a decision made quietly without community input or explanation. We are watching a commitment being broken in plain sight. And for the students, parents, and educators who were told that their voices matter, that breaks more than just trust. It breaks belief in the process. Some now say she can't be rehired until her probation is over, but that's not how the process works. State probation is served while teaching. This delay is not about policy, it's about politics. And while adults play politics, students are the ones who lose. They lose access to a teacher who has proven her excellence in the classroom time and time again. And beyond the impact on one teacher, there's a larger cost. When decisions like this are made behind closed doors, it sends a chilling message that this space is not one where people are truly heard, but one where those who speak up risk being pushed out. That's not the environment this Board says it stands for, and it's certainly not the one our community deserves. This isn't just about Ms. Calhoun, it's about the integrity of this Board and whether its words still carry weight. So I ask you, as a student and a member of this community, please do the right thing. Reinstate Ms. Calhoun. Thank you.
Kelly Columbertti. Max Mattle.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment. I hope you guys are really listening tonight. I'm going to speak about F9 and maybe touch on G1 as well. We'll see. We've heard phrases tonight, phrases that we've been hearing for a long time about this Board, right? Politics over students, extremism, political ideologies, adversarial relationships, right? For three, four years, we've been hearing that about this Board. Brevard deserves better. To get into it, what I want to go back to is what Pam talked about a little bit is your exact quote, Dr. Rendell, about this whole thing, what you told the paper. This is no mistake. This was a conscious and deliberate decision to engage in gender affirmation without parental knowledge. Here's the thing, there isn't a BPS policy or a state statute that says gender affirmation. Doesn't even have those words in it. Can't be illegal to do gender affirmation using a name, because it's not. There's a pronoun law, sure. But that's not what you said, is it? You said she made a deliberate decision to engage in gender affirmation. That's politics over students. You came out and said what this is really all about. It's not about that she may have broken some rule that was backed by some statute that's fairly poorly written. That's the issue. And what that really goes back to, and G1 touches on this as well, and why all these people are up here talking about G1, is there's a lack of governance on this Board. I don't think you guys know what that word means. You make rash decisions. It's not all your fault because the state does it as well. Sometimes you're driven by the state, I get that. The state's worse at it than you guys are, if you can believe that. You guys make rash decisions before you think things through, gather information, look at data. Instead, it's, hey, politics, go make this change. Now's the time. We've got to strike while the iron's hot, right? Your wireless cellphone policy is a perfect example of that. I'm going to talk more about that when the public hearing comes up on it. Jean, are you enjoying your phone there? I hope you're taking notes.
Kelly Columbertti. Max Mattle. Quinn Dykes.
Hi. So I'm here to speak about G1. You know, when it comes to the phone policy, I'll admit, I'm not in a position of experience to be able to advise on that, which is a smart thing to do, to defer to people who have experience. So I have nothing to say about it. But what I was concerned about were, there was some rephrasing, some removal of details about what constitutes bullying, particularly where, like, gender-based harassment is concerned. It's now totally put off to a different policy, which is dictated by Title IX. And if you follow federal government, you should be aware of what's happening at a federal level and how protections for, you know, even cis women are at risk these days. I find it funny that for as much talking is done about protecting women and children, they are usually the first ones to lose out when you go after the trans community. And where that's concerned, I've already brought up at a previous meeting that trans kids, trans individuals go through immense bullying. It is a mental health issue. It's something that we lose lives to, and it's incredibly serious. So I actually have a question for you guys, and it's just yes or no, and I would like everyone to respond. Do you think trans kids experience bullying? Mr. Thomas, would you be able to respond to that right now? Yes or no, do you think they experience bullying?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Campbell, do you think trans kids experience bullying?
The public comment isn't back and forth. Keep going.
It's not a conversation back and forth, just talk to us.
No back and forth? Okay, not even a nodding or a shaking of the head. I understand why you don't want to put that on the record because it seems like you have support from certain groups that have agendas against the trans community. And so I'll go ahead and name names. So we all know, everyone in this room knows, that Moms for Liberty is part and parcel of the reason why we have to have these ridiculous conversations. And this time, Jean, I don't care how many times you roll your eyes or laugh at me while I'm talking about it, but if you want to talk about bullying, if you want to talk about bullying, let's talk about Moms for Liberty and the fact that they harass people digitally, in person. People in this room have been harassed, in addition, not only to specifically to harassment, but retaliation is mentioned in the bullying policy. And I would say that what you're doing against Ms. Calhoun is nothing short of retaliating against her for standing up for her students and being proven that she did the right thing. Because if the state isn't willing to punish her for referring to a student by a certain name, then what leg do you have left to stand on? Honestly, I'm glad that you are not allowing yourselves to respond right now because I know there's nothing you could really say to comfort me or anyone in this room that you actually are looking out for students or looking out for teachers. Or I'm just a member of this community, okay? But I want to make sure that the kids that are going to the schools that I went to have at least half a good education or social time as I had, because they deserve to feel safe, they deserve to feel respected, and we're going to keep coming back until they are!
Quinn Dykes. Ryan Matrigalli.
Good evening, Board. I cut out a lot of what I was going to say tonight. A, because I spoke two meetings ago on this exact very topic, which is going to be G1 on wireless communication devices. And a lot of what I still have to say has already been said tonight, but I want to make sure it is reiterated, because it's important. When I was in high school, yes, I graduated in 2024, as all of you know, I had classes with forty kids in them and one teacher. If you were a teacher in that classroom and kids were on their phones, you would be going around that classroom the entire time trying to get kids off their phones rather than teaching the curriculum you had planned for that day. I have seen it happen with your old policy, and I am sure enough that it's going to happen with this one. Second, I want to talk about how I used my own laptop, this exact one, for education purposes, and how the language of this current policy does not allow for it. I was a dual enrollment student. My sophomore year of high school, I hopped on a bus midway through second period and was bussed over to Eastern Florida to take my dual enrollment courses and bussed back during my lunch period. On Fridays, there are no Eastern Florida classes. Where would they put us? In the cafeteria. Had I not had my laptop, I would be sitting there doing absolutely nothing for that entire hour and a half during the school day. So because of these things, I urge you to revise this policy and come back to it when you've done so. Thank you.
Quinn Dykes, Ryan Matrigalli, Xander Colangelo.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent and community members. My name is Quinn, and tonight I wanted to offer the perspective of a newer Brevard County resident in reference to Item G.2, the final public hearing on revisions to Policy 0165, which governs how this board conducts its meetings. I've lived here for about a year and a half now, the last board meeting being my first BPS meeting. I chose to do my own due diligence before speaking at that meeting, which included watching every single board meeting, board workshop, and any live stream recording this board has published for the last six months. Throughout those recordings and last meeting, I have received conflicting information from board comments, one of which you've already heard from so many community members about your positioning surrounding Ms. Calhoun. Policy 0165.
You know what, ma'am, I'm going to stop you for just a brief second. That was pulled from the agenda.
Okay, but the G2, the policy hearing is still the public meeting?
Yeah. The agenda, when it got approved, the motion to approve it was to approve it without G2, so it is no longer being considered by the board.
Okay, well, thank you for censoring me.
All right.
Can we try G1?
You have your time to speak about anything that's on the agenda.
Okay, so G1. Okay, well, I'm going to try this again, and we'll see, we'll all get my second warning. These conflicting comments made from meeting to meeting and lack of elaboration and transparency of reasoning and the decision-making is something the community is begging for. This is not about politics, it's about governing officials following through on decisions and comments they make to the public. I challenge you all to go back and even just watch the last three months of recordings. Upon reflecting, you can say, can you say these decisions and comments you made were in good faith? Were they digestible for you community members to understand the follow of logic? I urge you all to act on your own responsibilities from the Student Code of Conduct, which says to promote a positive, safe, and supportive school climate, and communicate and respond to parents, guardians, in a way that is accessible and easily understood. Following your own responsibilities, I urge you to host a moderate, neutral town hall outside of this chamber into a place where everyone, no matter if they're a student, parent, guardian, school staff, or administrator, can have an open conversation without fear or intimidation. No one is asking you to step outside your wheelhouse. I understand the relations that have prior to me moving to this county have transpired, but as a new resident, I would really appreciate and love to see an outside moderated discussion, so there can be moderated back and forth in a neutral way. Policy, actually, I'm not going to say policy, to ensure transparency, accountability, and meaningful public participation in decision-making. This board has the opportunity to listen to their community members and pass the actions that the community members who voted you all in would like to see. I'm sure you guys have a hard job, and we appreciate you doing this job, but I would really like to see this board really focus on their community members. Thank you.
Ryan Matrigalli, Xander Colangelo, Sebastian Martinez.
Good evenings, members of the board and Dr. Rendell. Thanks for having me and allowing me to speak tonight. I'll be speaking on Agenda Item G1. To start off, this new law that has been passed is only supposed to enforce electronic device bans on grades K through eight, not nine through 12. The ruling of this new policy you plan to implement is not as beneficial as you may believe it to be. Why make it so students can't use their phones or personal devices during lunchtime or breaks as long as they are paying attention in class? What about the students who need special devices to be able to properly learn in a school setting? Onto my next point. Many high schools have a college advisor on campus that you can speak to about classes or career paths. Wouldn't it make sense to use your laptop or tablet to look at said classes or campuses to ensure that what you're talking about is correct? College advisors and counselors are good, but no one is that good unless they have photographic or perfect auditory memory. Why make their jobs more difficult? On another note, Satellite High School spent $4,000 over the budget to purchase paper for this upcoming school year to make up for the lack of phones and laptops that students supply using their own personal devices. On the topic of making people's jobs more difficult, what about teachers? Just as an example, in physics classes, you might use your phone in place of stopwatches because of their convenience. Perhaps in research classes, or dare I say AP literature, some sites or books may be blocked or banned because, and can be accessed through school devices or school libraries. This can be a problem as it may restrict students from finding the crucial information they may need for their project or study. On another note, that may be off topic but still on agenda, why are students who follow the rules while using their personal devices forced to suffer, while students who watch Euphoria and Game of Thrones on campus just find another way to sneak their devices during class? On top of that, applications like College Board Common App and Big Future School require multi-device authentication to access, which affects the students, seniors, and AP students. Why make your successful students and hardworking staff suffer by wasting precious class time by waiting for the next day and the day after that to get their school devices set up when it could all be solved with a device like the one I hold in my hand? Why make it more difficult for those students who work tirelessly day after day to keep their grades up? Why make it more difficult for the students who slave away on college boards studying for AP exams in May? Why make it more difficult for the students like me to prepare ourselves for college in the upcoming year where those college students have to use their personal devices? It just doesn't make sense. I know that you want what's best for your schools and your district, but why not just follow the state with this one? I think the policy you are adding is just making an unnecessary hurdle for your teachers, students, and even parents. Personal devices aren't a weapon of destruction, but rather a tool for the path of success. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to get straight to the point with anecdote from my class. My school was unable to provide me with a Spanish class, and because I wanted to graduate with my Bileiteracy Seal, I had to take it online in a lab period. However, the computer I was given was inadequate to actually take the class. About fifty percent of the time, it would take half the class period to log on to the computer. And in many cases, I just never even got to my class, to my course. And even today, I measured the amount of time it took me to log in for my first period to get on to my computer, took me sixteen minutes out of our forty-nine minute class period, which is pretty much one-third of my entire class period, which is wasted trying to log in. And when I got home today, it took me sixteen seconds, not sixteen minutes, to get on to my computer, which, that's a huge change that could really affect our learning in And also, for science research, I, in order to complete my project last year, had to use proprietary software that wasn't available on the school computers. So, science research is a way that I can actually show my academic strength, and that's being limited by not being able to bring in a personal computer. One final point is that I understand you don't want to actually stop the bullying, the hazing, and the drugs that go on in our schools, but rather sweep it under the rug, making sure nobody can actually record it with their phones. That way, nobody actually sees what's actually happening in our schools. And I see you shaking your head, thinking it's an absurd statement, but the application that the state asks every single high school student to download is a four to five FL, and it requires your phone to report bullying, hazing, drugs, things to keep the students and the community safe, but that's now not being allowed. So I'd like you guys to consider principal discretion. Allow the principal to approve certain times we can actually use these devices. And actually, one more point, while I still have some time, about teachers. I've seen from the start of the school year this year to the start of school year last year, that my teachers are much more scared and frightened to make personal connections with their students, because they feel like if they get too personal, if they actually build a connection with their students, that they can be fired up and the contract not renewed. So I think it's something we should really consider. Thank you.
Sebastian Martinez, Zaire Somdi, Devin Van.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Sebastian Martinez, and as always, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm speaking on Agenda Item F9, Instructional Staff Recommendations, and I'd like to start with asking the board, Ms. Campbell, Mr. Susan, Mr. Trent, Ms. Wright, to follow through with your commitments you made to the public during the April 22 board meeting. We're on record, you all, in one way or another, came to the consensus that if the state votes to reinstate Ms. Calhoun's contract, then you would all be interested in having her back as a teacher in your district. At past board meetings, I pointed out what seemed to be you all as community leaders deflecting blame and refusing to take accountability for how this district treated Ms. Calhoun. But even then, I said to myself, maybe there is just another reason they haven't reinstated Ms. Calhoun? Now we're back at the same crossroad. And just to refresh, you said Ms. Calhoun could be reinstated if the state of Florida decided to reinstate her teaching certificate. And again, to refresh, they voted unanimously, meaning without opposition, to not terminate her teaching contract. This was a true testament to sticking true to advancing better education in the state of Florida. But then a couple days later, I read an article where the superintendent essentially rejects the idea of hiring Ms. Calhoun in a statement full of political rhetoric. I talked to so many community members about education and education policy. The one thing people can agree to regardless of political background is that political agendas have no place on the school board. Period. So as a board, your main, if not one of the only, staff you oversee is the superintendent. You should be holding him to a higher standard if you want excellence. If you want excellence, you demand excellence of those in leadership. So now it's back to you on whether or not you're going to stand by your word, whether or not you're going to restore Ms. Calhoun, whether or not you're going to put the interest of the school district before any existing political agenda, or it might score you extra points in a primary for higher office, Ms. Campbell. I mean, I know you've all seen how many open teaching positions you have. Fill the classrooms with teachers, not year-round substitutes or partial-time substitute teachers. I'm asking that you help take the right steps to restore a culture of collaboration, of respect, integrity, leadership, and professionalism. I'm asking you to put students before politics and to restore Ms. Calhoun today. Hold your superintendent accountable. Thank you so much for your time.
Zaire Somdi, Devin Van, Sarah Merzke.
Good evening, board members. I'm Zaire Kekehun Asamdi. I'm here tonight because trust has been broken, and that matters deeply in the school system. This board looked the public in the eye and said that if the state cleared Ms. Calhoun to teach, her reinstatement would be reconsidered. The state has cleared her, that condition has been met, and instead of acting with integrity, you all are sitting on your hands. That is a broken promise, plain and simple, and is visible to every student, every parent, and every educator here in Brevard. We've now heard the excuse that she must complete her probation first, but that's not how that typically works, and it can be served while teaching. That means that this delay is not about rules, it's about politics. Every day she's kept out of the classroom is a day students miss out on access to a high-quality experience teacher and learning from someone who has already proven herself. Worse, this board's actions are creating damage. When good educators are punished instead of supported, and I want to emphasize good educators, when good educators are punished instead of supported, when commitments are made and then ignored, it sends a message that speaking up or even just doing your job with integrity could cost you everything. That fear is spreading, and it doesn't stop at the teacher's desk. Students are watching, families are watching, and the silence of retaliation and the games speaks volumes. If this board is serious about healing, about transparency, about representing the people of Brevard, then stop hiding. So tonight, I ask these things of you. Be honest with Brevard, bring Ms. Calhoun back, acknowledge that families are concerned and confused as to why this is happening, and put students before politics. Also, hearing the concept of a town hall sounds amazing, and I think I'm going to add that to my list of requests as well.
Devin Van, Sarah Merzke, Michelle Barano.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Rendell. My comment relates to Policy 5136, the Wireless Communication Device Policy. My children are in 12th and 9th grade at Satellite High School. They are taking advanced placement and honors courses, and the policy prohibiting the use of laptops is hindering their ability to be productive and prepared in school. Textbooks are online, sheet music is online, college applications are online, BAFSA is online. The computers and laptops available for use through BPS are not sufficient. They crash often, and substitute teachers are not able to pull them back online. I was actually hopeful when I initially heard that this board was going to work toward reducing phone use during instructional time, because I do believe that cellphones can be harmful and distracting for all of us. But the policy is not a solution to cellphone usage. It is a vast overreach, and it puts high school students at a distinct disadvantage for no good reason. When politics are not well thought out and are not based in reality, you end up with situations that invite uneven enforcement and community confusion. As a parent, it's frustrating to watch our schools get jerked around with these confusing and nonsensical board decisions. Let high school students take notes on their laptops. Let highly effective high school teachers who have the respect of their students and students' parents teach. Stop making school more difficult for some of your best students in your hunt for political relevance. Thank you.
Sarah Merzke, Michelle Barano, Xander Moritz.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Merzke. I'm a wife of a husband who is part-owner of an aerospace company and job creator here in Brevard County. I'm a mom of two children who attend BPS. I'm a clinical social worker who has had the honor of serving the most marginalized of Brevard County. I'm a taxpayer, stakeholder, and voter. I live in District 2 for school board. I have a holistic interest in assisting this district in serving every student with excellence as a standard. Tonight, I will be addressing Agenda Item G1, the Wireless Communication Device Policy. In my late 30s and early 40s, I went back to college. My grades in GPA and undergrad were high enough that I qualified for the Advanced Standing Program for grad school, which means I was able to do my master's degree in one year instead of the traditional two years, while also earning a scholarship, running a household, being a wife and a mother, as well as graduating with honors. I could not have done any of this without my cellphone and my laptop. I needed my laptop and cellphone in class to exchange contact information for group projects and trips. I needed my laptop for various reasons during class, but mainly to write papers and attend Zoom calls. I also needed my laptop for my internship work. How are we supposed to equip the next generation of students without working from a laptop in class? How are they supposed to learn any computer science skills, learn how to learn CAD, coding, engineering, architecture programs, any aerospace technology work, and so on, without using a laptop in the classroom? Or learning computer skills imperative to their future? We live on the Space Coast, and we should be offering a full steam education to equip students for college and job skills for the space industry and beyond. On a somber subject, on October 4, 2024, Rockledge High School went on lockdown due to a student or students bringing a gun or guns to school. Another student saw the threat on their Snapchat, and they were able to access, they were able to access their Snapchat at school and notify the front desk and then school security. I shudder to think what would have happened if that student didn't see the threat on Snapchat and notified the authorities. Snapchat and notified the authorities. Would we have had students coming out of that situation in body bags instead of handcuffs? Would my innocent child have been one of those who would have died that day? My husband and I were able to provide comfort, calm, and quiet prayers to our child that day. I don't know if that would have been the last time I would have talked to my child. Please do not take that away from me and other parents. I would like to make the suggested changes to the policy that students are allowed to use WCD as the direction and discretion of instructional staff for educational purposes only, and that student is able to use in an emergency. My hope is that this board accepts this as a solution and not a criticism. Thank you.
Michelle Barano, Xander Moritz, Anya Denison.
Hello, my name's Michelle Barano. I'm a parent of a student in 10th grade, and I didn't prepare remarks before I got in this room, but I felt it was important, since I was able to actually physically be here, that I represent dozens and dozens and dozens of people on my Facebook groups that are expressing incredible frustration over the cellphone policy. There's been a pretty consistent theme here tonight on two issues, and I I'm in line with everyone pretty much on those. I do want to point out that the state law is clear for under the undergrades, but for high school, you have discrepancy here. I read through the policy trying to understand what it was that you were trying to do. I'm very fortunate, I consider myself incredibly fortunate, that I attended school pre-cellphone, and I can't imagine the grief the teachers have to deal with because they are a horrible distraction. They are. I don't know anyone who doesn't think they are a distraction. However, you'll notice I'm relying on mine right now. Just about everybody that came up here was reading remarks off a cellphone because it is a superior way of communicating in terms of writing notes to yourself, taking pictures. My student would always take pictures of the blackboard so that she could focus on what the teacher was saying, read the information when she got home. She can't do that anymore. She was kind of having a panic attack today, worried that she was going to miss something. They are horrible distractions. They're the world we live in today. I noticed you guys all have laptops on your desk. Try and imagine getting through your workday without being able to use your laptop. For the high school, at least where you have discretion, I urge you to reconsider this policy. Ideally, it would make sense for the students to be able to use their cellphones during the breaks. Think about this, they have five minutes to get to their class. How do they tell time? How are they going to get to class on time if they can't regulate where they are in terms of the schedule? I mean, this is everything now. It's not just a phone. It's your it's your your external hard drive. It's your brain, it's your schedule, it's your clock, it's everything, it's your memory. So being told that they can't use it is going to be a real hardship in a lot of areas. I understand that they are a distraction. Punish the misbehavior. Don't punish the entire student body all day long. If you use your cellphone in class, it gets taken away. You do it again, you get detention or some other kind of punishment. We've been doing this in the past, we've made it this far without this rule. And the laptop rule is incredibly frustrating. I spent a day at my kid's school registering kids' parents for PTA on student equipment. It was horrible. When it wasn't crashed, it was stalled. Unless you can provide excellent adequate equipment to substitute for what people are doing with their laptops, their e-readers, and their cellphones, you should allow them back in the class. Thank you.
Xander Moritz, Anya Denison.
Good evening, members of this board, Superintendent Rendell. My name is Xander Moritz, and I am here tonight to speak to item eight on instructional staff recommendations. This is the item that determines who will and will not be teaching in the Brevard School District this year. It is exactly where the decision to rehire Ms. Melissa Calhoun belongs, and it is why I am here tonight. I do not live in Brevard County. I am here because this decision and the way that it has been handled has drawn a large deal of concern that extends far beyond this boardroom. Across Florida, people are watching because the precedent you set here will not start at the Brevard County line. If that were simply a local personnel matter driven by local education priorities, this whole situation would not have sparked this level of attention. But it is clear to everyone in this room and beyond it that what is happening here is being shaped not by local educational priorities, but by national political agendas. This is not in the best interest of Brevard students. This is also why a refusal to fully engage in real conversation, it sends its own message. When a decision is played out as political theater, that will always draw an audience, and that audience will always take away a message from your actions, whether you intend it or not. Earlier this year, the board said it would consider her reinstatement if the state allowed her to continue teaching under probation. That was the clear condition that this board set. Now, the state has done exactly that. They have upheld her license, placed it under probation, and cleared her to be in the classroom, yet she still is not at your explicit instruction. This should not be about politics. It needs to be about integrity, fairness, and maintaining our commitments. When a governing body says one thing, follows due process, and then fails to honor its own word, it damages trust not only with one person, but with every student, every parent, and every educator in this district who expects you to model the same accountability we expect of the students in Brevard. We must hold ourselves to the same standards we expect from our students. This decision is also happening amongst the backdrop of deepening concerns about the relationship between the board and its community. In recent weeks, residents have expressed frustration at the lack of open dialogue on major decisions, and I don't need to tell you that the boardroom does not feel like a healthy, sustainable culture. There is toxic relationships developing, and we need to heal them through the creation of an open moderated, sustainable community town hall. That is why I'm calling for two clear, clean actions tonight. The first, amend the instructional staff recommendations to include Ms. Melissa Calhoun's reinstatement. Second, commit to holding a moderated, neutral community town hall, not here in this chamber and not under the rules of a board meeting, but where board members, parents, students, teachers, everyone can come together for an open, respectful, and resource-driven dialogue. Reinstiting Ms. Calhoun would be a concrete act of fairness and a follow-through on your word. Hosting a town hall would be a clear step towards repairing relationships and restoring trust. Together, these actions would demonstrate that the board is serious about listening to the people of Brevard and moving forward together. Thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your commitment to your word and to the services of Brevard Public Schools.
Anya Denison.
Good evening, board. My name's Anya, and I'm here to speak on the instructional staff recommendations. I do also want to offer a quick note on the tech policy before I get into the comment I prepared. High school classrooms are integrated with cellphones and tech of all sorts, like QR codes. Kahoot literally works off phones, capturing notes and so on. If you've visited a high school in like the last five years, it's standard practice for students to bring laptops to school and use them because school laptops are usually slow, new systems that are outdated are not preferred. Gen Z doesn't like Microsoft. It takes time out of a student's day to switch between platforms from school and home. So just offering that for consideration. iPads widely used for notes, super necessary, especially going into college. People bring them from high school to college, and it's just a thing important to know, especially if you haven't visited recently. But I'm talking about instructional staff recommendations, and I specifically want to talk about the fact that Ms. Melissa Calhoun's contract isn't being renewed despite everything that's happened at the state level. I think that it's really important to talk about the fact that there's not a reason that beyond her not being returned from probation, you're not reinstating her. I'm so confused about that. I think this, at its core, is about following through on our word, and you set a public condition, right? And the condition was set, and it was met, and the community expects it to be honored. So when it's not, of course, people are going to be confused and upset about it and just want clarity, right? Especially when we've seen cases where teachers on probation have continued teaching and it hasn't been an issue. And I think that as a solution, first of all, I would love to see a town hall be brought forward with a neutral moderator, open format, students, educators, board members, everyone in the same room to be able to ask questions in an environment that's comfortable and isn't just me talking at you for three minutes and you not being able to respond, right? Because that's not actually productive, and sure, you receive my information, but I don't get to receive yours outside of the superintendent's statement. So not super productive and doesn't build a relationship. I think that reinstating Ms. Calhoun and bringing that forward tonight would also be a phenomenal step. If not, I would also love to see dialogue about why you're choosing not to and to address it in this meeting as opposed to just not bring it forward. Those two steps, I think, would put us in a better place. Would love to hear your thoughts and appreciate the time tonight.
All right. That concludes our agenda item only public comments. Thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to address the board with your concerns and suggestions. I would like to remind the public that the board is accessible for further conversations outside our board meetings through scheduling a meeting. We are now at the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are 23 items on the list under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any board member wish to pull any items? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items on today's agenda. Any discussion? Paul Rollcall, please. Mr. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Campbell.
Hi.
Mr. Trent.
Hi.
Mr. Susan. Ms. Wright.
Hi.
Public hearing is now open to public comments. We will, in accordance with Florida law, accept the speakers on G one, policy 2260-02. Is there anyone present that wishes to address this item?
Good evening again. You've already heard me speak about this topic mostly from the viewpoint of one of my daughters, but now I'm going to speak generally from both perspectives. One of my daughters came home from the first day of school to tell me that most of her teachers do not support this policy, but they are fearful of being fired. In fact, one teacher today.
Mr. Chair, can you pause the time? Sorry, this this is the policy, the anti-harassment policy that's being.
Yes. All right. Is there anyone else wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul Rollcall, please. Mr. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Campbell.
Hi.
Mr. Trent.
Hi.
Mr. Susan. Ms. Wright.
Hi.
Mr. Susan. All right. Here we go. Policy 5136. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item?
This is the wireless communication device policy.
I'm just going to continue where I was. Scroll back to that. One of my daughters came home from school the first day to tell me that most of her teachers don't support the policy, but they are fearful of being fired. In fact, one teacher today mistook a wallet for a phone and audibly said, please put that away, I don't want to be fired. The amount of stress felt by both the professionals and our students is unnecessary. It is now day two, and one of my daughters has already clocked that the tensions against adults during lunch are already rising. Lunch is a time where our students can decompress. While socials may get the most talking time, what is often ignored is the use of music, reading, and studying. Without having access to any technology devices, what are bored kids most likely to do? As stated by one of my daughter's teachers on the first day, quote, bored kids get in trouble, they'll fight just to fight. I expect fighting to get a lot worse, and I hope you all can avoid that. Unfortunately, Brevard Public Schools has not fostered a healthy and safe environment for our teachers to speak out. So instead, many teachers instead turn to their students and ask them to come speak out or email instead. As a BPS-educated student myself, whose daughters are now sitting in front of many of the same teachers I had, my heart breaks for what they're experiencing. The need that the idea that they need our students to speak out instead of feeling safe to do it themselves speaks volumes. Ms. Campbell, I am sure you can relate to the plight of one of my son's friends. He's in multiple music electives, and each requires a thick binder with sheet music. Those same binders can be replaced with an iPad for digital sheet music, but now he can't use that. And just a reminder, many of our students don't have access to lockers because their buildings don't have them. This policy is not well thought out. It's a knee-jerk reaction with tons of unintended consequences that work against student achievement. By lumping our high schools into this policy, we are putting undue stress on our students and ripping the autonomy from our teachers and administrators. I think Samantha said it best to me. Why are they targeting the smart kids? Can't they just hold the troublemakers accountable? Isn't that their actual job? Thank you.
I want to reiterate everything Ms. Curvin just said, just off the top, right? I really think you guys need to rethink this policy. I think you made a couple of, I won't say mistakes, but you did it over summer. A lot of parents didn't know about the ninth to 12th ban that goes above and beyond the state law. I think this policy has been made without serious consideration of the impacts across all of Brevard Public Schools. You've heard tonight about IEPs could be impacted. You could very easily end up in a place where students with an IEP have access to technology items in class and the other students don't. Inequity. It's going to impact some students more than others. And I stand up here as somebody, as somebody else said, I think everybody in this audience agrees, no phones during instructional time without severe exceptions is a reasonable ask. But that's not what this policy is, right? That's not what this policy is. This policy is as far as you can get with cellphone bans. I get it. I get why you think that's an important thing, but it's a bad policy. You guys are the board. You can recall this policy. Go back to the drawing board. Get more community input. That's something, I talked about governance, and that's what we don't see from this board. We don't see community input. You guys make your decisions in a vacuum, a literal vacuum. You're getting you're getting probably good input from your your staff and your teachers, but there's no community input. There's no surveys. You know, you do, you guys do your yearly survey, and if you're making policy decisions off a one-time snapshot survey where you're not even getting 40% to answer, you're making mistakes. Okay? You guys need more data, more input, and I know it takes longer. That's what you got to do to make good decisions. Please rethink about this policy before you vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I hope you all had a great summer. My name is Ava Newman, and I'm a senior at Satellite High. I wanted to share a bit of my story as the last few years have been a little chaotic. I play violin. I am huge into orchestra and have been since fifth grade. When I got to high school, I'm not going to lie, I wasn't the best player. With inexperienced players, they tend to not be able to tune or really play in time. I'll promise I'll get to a point. During class, my teacher would allow us individual practice time for solo ensemble, concerts, or even like concerto competitions. I came from a not-so-very-rich family, so the materials that I had were my phone. Tuning goes on the phone. I have a downloading, I have an app on my phone that allows me to tune my instrument since I cannot do it by ear at the time. It also allows me to have a metronome so I can stay in time while working on my pieces. Most people use their phones for situations like these so that teachers don't have to spend their own money on tools like this to just hand out to all their instruments. I also teach instruments, and my first recommendation to all my students is to download tuning apps on their phone in case they cannot tune their own instrument for them. This allows them to learn how to tune their instrument as well as watch and see their how their playing fluctuates. If you can't see where I'm going with this, I'll say it straight. Banning phones in high school levels can be detrimental to a lot of teachers and students when it comes to the tools needed for that development. Before you say, oh, well, we survived back in the day without phones, times have changed. In fact, the orchestra program at Satellite has only gotten better since then, due to our amazing teacher as well as the support we get from everyone around us and the tools that are available to us. But now that tools have basically been banned, teachers now are expected to get the tools that are unnecessary when phones could just be permitted. You are denying phones to juniors and seniors who are on their way to adulthood. Actually, most seniors are turning 18 real here here real soon. You're telling me my peers could get sent to war but not use a cellphone in class? Instead of taking things away permanently, why not try and teach these students how to regulate their screen time correctly? Why can't we pull out our phones at lunch, the hallways? More importantly, why enforce these teachers to buy supplies when it could be easily be done by phones? Are you going to supply these teachers with the tools that are being taken away from these phones? Music teachers have to buy manual metronomes, tuners, which can average around $50 if you want a decent one. Physics teachers are now having to buy stopwatches. When I was in physics, I used my phone to more timely like see my projectiles. Not to mention with kids not being able to look at their phones for simple things like Google Classroom, Focus, teachers and counselors having to print more paper and more class times being wasted during school. Yesterday, I had spent 10 minutes figuring out how to use the bathroom passes, another five trying to sign in to the computers since the internet at our school is so slow, and another five having to put computers away. Instead of spending 20 minutes on figuring out how to work-
Thank you so much for that time.
Hello again. So I want you guys to think. So the state made the rule for kindergarten through eighth grade, right? There's a reason they didn't make it kindergarten through 12th grade. They had, they had a thought process behind that. And I, I want you guys to, to consider, yes, adapting some sort of rule that prevents students from being distracted by cellphones. It's very important. Everyone agrees with that. But the way the, your new rule is right now, it's not going to actually solve the problem. Kids are still going to, to, to do what they're not supposed to do, even as much discipline as you can give them. So I, I want us to think about who the rule is meant to help and who it's hurting. It's, it's meant to, to help the people who are going to get in trouble no matter what. But it's hurting the people who are trying to get ahead. The people who are trying to use these tools to advance their education the furthest. They're the ones who are working the hardest. And it's hurting the people who have, who are less able and the people who are already behind. It prevents them from catching back up. You're just leaving them in the past without these extra technologies. And that's my main point. I want to make sure you guys know that. I think a proper solution would be to rework this rule and also to allow the principals to have the discretion to know when it's appropriate and when it's not appropriate to use these devices. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Again, my name's Chris Higginbotham. I am a- Mayor of Three, and on this item, I just want to say, I spoke earlier and my phone was going off. Multiple teachers, multiple school board employees are just saying, "I can't believe you spoke about that. That's so great. We need this. We love this policy." That might not be exactly the most popular voice in this room right now, but I'm telling you that teachers want this, administrators want it, parents want it. Most of the kids, some of the kids I talk to want it. I get not a lot of kids want it. It is what is best for these kids. These are, I have, my kid is now here with me. He was at wrestling practice over at Viera. He's not going to want to lose his cellphone when he's in high school. However, my kid won't be using a cellphone during school because he's there to educate. Dr. Rendell, under your leadership, you spent a lot of money on technology. Buying computers, refurbishing computers, internet, high-speed internet. A lot of money went into technology. Students will adapt. They'll overcome. Our student population is smart, and they are well-versed in technology. This is not the only county where this is happening. I come from Orange County. I was administrator over there. Multiple counties in this state are doing this. Kids are doing just fine. They still have access to the internet. Those computers work. I just want you to understand that I hope we have this policy. I think as a parent, we need it. And I think more than the people in this room have a voice, and they want it to happen. And it is what is best for our students. I thank Dr. Rendell for you spending the money for that technology. The kids do not need their cellphones at school. The facility is ready for this technology. Ms. Su Han back there, she's doing great at our facilities, so much so that we saw her here this, this afternoon. And that's about it. I appreciate it. Thank you guys for your time.
Hello. Hello again. I wanted to speak as a student who this policy is directly affecting. And amongst my classmates that I've talked to for the past two days, as today was the second day of school, this policy has greatly impacted our learning day-to-day. Because not being able to use our personal laptops or iPads to take notes in class has affected our ability to learn content and preparing us for the future. In college, I have three older sisters, and they are all in college. And in college, nobody uses paper and pencil because it is impractical. People use iPads because teachers prepare their lectures and put them on slideshows, and they can directly take notes on the, on their iPad on the lectures that the teacher is talking about. So if our goal is to prepare us for college, which is why I'm going to school and many of my peers are going to school, we want to go to college. So practicing using an iPad to take notes will prepare us for college. And forcing us to not use all of the tools that we are so lucky to have is negatively affecting our future. What, I ask you what the point of this policy is. Students are going to be distracted, whether it's by their phone, talking to their friends during class. Those students will get in trouble. But the students who are using these as tools to further their education are being impacted more than those who would get in trouble regardless. Thank you.
Hi, it's me again. Jennifer Nagy, Edgewood. So Edgewood's one of those schools where we have kids that are on the super exceeder spectrum. They're the APs, the dual enrollments, the high achievers. The principal just explained to me this week about the, the discipline policy associated with this, where the first time the phone gets taken away, the second time the parents have to come up and get the phone, the third time they get a three-day suspension. And then she laughed, and she said, "Do you know that you only get a one-day suspension for vaping?" And she goes, "As long as it doesn't have THC," which I was like, "Okay." And I was like, that, that actually made me laugh out loud because I was like, "You mean that our kids, the ones who are going to get in trouble are the kids who are like taking notes and trying to work on stuff during lunch hour on their computers are going to get a three-day suspension for using their personal computers?" And she goes, "I certainly hope not." And I certainly hope not, guys. So I'm hoping that we can have a little discussion about this before you approve it. Pretty please. Thank you.
All right, do you hear a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Sorry. We need a second for discussion.
Yeah, I'll second it. Yeah.
Okay. Discussion.
Mr. Chair. When we first started discussing this, I was, all four being zero, zero tolerance. And the only thing I did not really consider was some of the points being made about the use of laptops and iPads. And I'm not saying I wouldn't be supported as it is, but I think it'd be, from my perspective, prudent if we were to table this and to, to give it, you know, a month or so that we can fully investigate the, if there's the unintended consequences. I would hate for us to approve this, and then we're, we're dealing with unintended consequences. I know Orange County does it, and there's other counties that do it and have no problem. I just want to make sure that how we address it is concerning laptops and iPads is, you know, that we have everything the way it needs to be, that we're all comfortable with it. I'm just not so sure that being a strict, a strict ban on iPads and laptops is, is definitely, is the right way to go.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah. I'll jump in here on this one big time. All right, here, I'm going to, I'm going to go on a soapbox for a few minutes because some of the things that change in this policy, guess what? They were already there. The whole, the whole iPad, the whole laptop, that conversation, this is not new to the policy. If you look at the policy change, it's what's in green. It really is no cellphones. Prior to, we had a rule in place that said with the principal's discretion. And guess what we found? When we walk the classrooms, or you're going to lunch and you see kids doing TikTok videos or things like that, I'm going, "What is, what is happening here? Why are we, we're at school. We're here to learn today." So for me, I'm going, "Okay, there's, there's a lot of conversation happening that just doesn't really make the most sense." Some of this policy was already there. It already existed. The principals already had the discretion to allow the phones to be used, and it still was being abused. The, the rhetoric out there that you're punishing kids, our intent is not to punish kids. It's the exact opposite, 100%. It's to make the classroom a productive learning environment where cellphones aren't a distraction, where a kid's not looking at a cellphone, and all of a sudden a text message pops up or an alert from a Snapchat or whatever, and now you're going to tell me a kid is going to go, "Okay, no." I mean, I have a teenager. I have a high school student. I know how this works. So I, I'm not that far removed from this situation to understand truly that this is a distraction to our children, 100% a distraction to our children. And I think in order to have the most productive learning environment, we need to take this step. I support this, and I, I told you, John, I jokingly said I'll probably be the most hated school board member after this from the students because they're not going to be in favor of it at first, but guess what else? I'll tell you this. My children get the opportunity, they've got the opportunity to go on vacation every year, and we go to a place where they don't get any cellphone service, and it's one of the most memorable vacations they have. And one of the things that they tell me every single time is that they love the fact that they don't have their cellphone. And I'm like, "Really? Wow." And you don't even know that until you get removed from it for a little while to understand that this maybe isn't the best thing for us. I know it's convenient. I know that it's replaced the ability to, to write notes. I don't think that's a good thing. I, I personally don't think that's a good thing. But for me, I, I support the policy. I, I know it was going to come with some criticism. I was fully prepared for that. I, I just think that this is what is truly in, in the best interest of our students, and will make our classrooms more productive. And that's all I have to say.
Just to clarify, I was not suggesting, I'm, I'm not for using, you know, cellphones during school. I was just, wanted to make sure that we, there's not unintended consequences with regard to iPads and, and laptops.
Which was already there.
But that was before, that was at a principal's discretion. Now it would be totally, that discretion would be removed.
Oh, one more quick thing. I would like to note this too. Sorry, I just said this before. There's all this talk about this happening right now. This policy hasn't been approved yet, so it's not actually in place. So I'm not really sure. I'm getting emails from people about this policy and, and kids coming back into, into the school saying, "Oh, no cellphones are allowed." Right now, our old policy is what currently is in existence. And, and we did that strategically so that we could do this whenever the school system was, when we were back in session, so that we could campaign this and let everyone know, "This is what the changes are. Have a grace period." So it wasn't like shocker, "Welcome back to school. No cellphones." That's not the way that it's being done. We're doing it the exact opposite. So, thank you.
All right. Ms. Campbell?
Yeah. So just, just give us a minute. We, we've heard you. So just, just a couple of items of correction before I share my thoughts on this. And schools are communicating this out. They, and, and because there is something we've already voted on, we've already approved, and that is the student code of conduct. All of this language is in the code of conduct. So in schools, yes, we talked with Ms. Dampier, and we said, "Hey, can we officially, with the consequences, everything, the September 2nd date is the date." The schools are already putting it in place and letting people know that there's, there's no point in, and I understand it. Why would they not? One, it's in the code of conduct, but also if you're going to do this for the first couple of weeks, and then we're going to have a bait and switch and do it later. They're, they're getting that communication out there. I don't think anybody's gotten a three-day suspension yet because, you know, it's only the second day of school. But I, just, just to be clear, the student code of conduct was already approved by us. It's already out there. Okay? And the other thing is, yes, in the policy, that part is not new about laptops and computers, but we have not said, we have not said, Board, that we're going to continue to allow principal discretion for iPads and laptops. We have said, we're adding, it specifically says, "All students may not use," the new part, "a wireless communication device," which is defined in the first paragraph, "as all those things during the school day." They all have to be powered off or all, and stored out of sight during school hours from first bell to last bell. There is no exception. No exception for laptops, no exception for iPads. I, now, with that being said, and I appreciate what you say about taking a media break, absolutely, but school's not vacation either, and it is wonderful when we have time to get away and to decompress and, 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 but we're not trying to be productive in those times, and when we're at school, we're productive. And I have to tell you, Board, I hope that you have noticed in, not necessarily tonight, but in the communication we're getting via phone calls and emails, this isn't really a political issue, a right-left, conservative, liberal, Republican, Democrat issue because the proof of that is that once parents started having their eyes open and realizing this is going to happen, I'll address that in just a second, the very first email I got was from someone who I know has been an active part of Moms for Liberty. And the very next email right behind it, which made me laugh, was someone who is, you know, someone who's emailed me before and clearly is more on the left. So I, this is a bipartisan issue of people who like it and a bipartisan issue of people who don't like it. And I think when it comes to the students, they're pretty, most in the, don't like it camp. And I realize, we don't make decisions. We appreciate student input, but we have to, we do what we feel like is best for students. I continue to share with you guys what I shared back in May, when we first started having these conversations. There's too many things that our students use and for us to be, prepare them for the real world. And we brought some, some people have mentioned some things tonight that I had honestly forgotten about, which music. And I've got, you know, I've got musician students who absolutely use their metronomes, use their tuners. They do that all the time. I told you about my son who records, who has had permission to record his jazz solo, and would go home and play it over and over and over again and repeat it, and then the next day he'd go back and record it again to see if he got better. There are, and then we've got all the science re, I don't have science research kids, but we've got tons of science research kids that we recognize every year. And I would, I know Mr. Cheaton would love to say that we have all the things that they need to help them be successful, but we know, we are trying to reduce our refreshment rate, so we are getting faster, better technology all the time, and the ET department is doing their best job they can, but we don't, we do not have all the things that the students need to be successful in, in all the ways. And, you know, the dual enrollment thing came up today. So my stance has not changed on this. I would urge, at the risk of sending Ms. Dampier into, into a frenzy because she didn't want us going back and forth, she wanted us to nail it down, so we're not going back and forth. But at the risk of doing that, I would urge that if this passes tonight and we don't table it, that we go immediately back into work session so we can fix the language and, and try to find some kind of compromise so that students have access to at least some devices with approval, with approval, to use them for academic reasons. And if we want to put all the parameters on there that we can, we probably won't think of all of them, but to have more flexibility. So I, I just urge us, if this passes, that we go into our very next work session to workshop this and see if we can't get some, some better language around this. That's, like I said, if, if it passes tonight. I've been a no from the beginning, haven't changed my stance for the same reasons. And I'll, to be quite honest, it frustrates, a couple of things frustrate me. One, it frustrates me that, you know, when we talk about the language of, "Well, the other policy wasn't good enough because people weren't enforcing it." Then we need to make sure people are enforcing it. With, if the dress code as it is, by the way, it's not being enforced in every school evenly, but if the dress code is not being enforced, we don't then automatically go, "Well, the dress code's not being enforced, and now we're going to make everybody in the district wear uniforms." Or something else, you know, to that extreme. I think we need to, we need, we had a good thing in place. It was not being enforced. I hear you. People should not be recording videos in the hallways. I get it. Enforce that. Double down on it if we need to. But when it comes to academic reasons, and if we want to say no lunches, no passing periods, but when it comes to academic reasons, I urge the board to rethink that, and let's put that back in because that's really important to train our students. I think one of the reasons why we're getting the pushback, I actually was surprised by it, to be honest. One of my good friends is a dean's clerk. And when she started pushing me on this about a month ago, and she is also, you know, a parent. And, and I thought, "Well, we've been talking about this. Wasn't this in the news in May?" And, and, but the parents weren't paying attention. The community wasn't, maybe it wasn't publicized like I thought it was, and now it is. And so I don't think it's, it's really hard for us to say. I've talked to all these people, and they, I, I just don't think we're going to, I'll be honest, my son came home yesterday, who I have told, "If it passes, you will, I will not back you up. If you get caught with your cellphone, if you get suspended for three days, you're going to be suspended for three days. I don't care if you're a school board member, son. You're going to follow the rule." But just so you know, he, he came home and his, his impression from the stu, from his teachers, who I guarantee you, not a single one of them stood there and said, "I think this is a stupid rule." But his impression with the teachers was, they're, they're not supportive of it. This was a board initiative, the staff and the discipline committee that we put in place. in place. We don't have to do what they say because we are the ones that set the policy, but that recommendation was not from them. This is one of the places where we've overridden them. And we have the prerogative to do that, but I think we're making a mistake. So, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chair.
Matt?
Thank you. So, the one thing that I did want to say is I appreciate everybody coming out. I appreciate our students coming out and giving that voice. I truly do. I think it's good for us. But I do want to say, we all have been in our schools for the last two days. I've been to every single one of my high schools over the last two days, talking to kids about this and everything else. So, the thought that this board is not actively engaged with their students and their parents and the teachers and everything else is a farce. But I will tell you this. I have no, absolutely no desire to not remove the cellphones from the hallways, from the cafeterias and everything else. None, none at all. In fact, I got reports back from my administrations in two of my schools. One said that it was the loudest that they've ever had a lunch period because the kids were actually talking. And if that is the, some of the news that comes back from the engagements that the kids are doing, I just got chills to my bones because I know what these things are doing. The same administrator said, "I watched last year while kids were just scrolling while they were inside the cafeteria, not engaging with their people." I had another administrator tell me, "You know what happened? The kids sat there and they said, 'What are we going to do now?" And then she said, "Go ahead and start communicating to each other." And they said, "Well, can we, we love that, but can we get some board games?" So, I allocated some resources to go ahead and get some board games for them. So, the kids are actively starting to actually already do what we thought they would do, which is drop the phone, which has some of the most negative consequences for educational environments, negative consequences on social emotional healing, brains, everything else, all the way to attributions towards ADHD and everything else. Like, these cellphones are really, really bad inside of the educational work space. But at the same time, one of the things I did was I was at O'Gally High School and I was speaking to one of the political science classes. And they said to me, "You know, my laptop from the school's not working. And the other issue is, is that I'm not allowed to use my personal laptop. So, how do we do it?" And that's a problem, right? So, I looked at this tonight and I did call Ms. Nagy and talk to her and stuff like that. And Ms. Nagy, you weren't the only one. Sherri Lynn and other people are giving me a call on this item. But the thing is, is that I feel very strongly with exactly what you just said, Ms. Campbell, is we have to pass this policy now and then go immediately back in and open it up and have conversations about how we can allow access to it. We also, part of the conversation needs to be, why is it that our laptops are not actually fully functioning for our students where they are? Is there something that we can do to allocate resources to get those to the table faster? But no, I am 100% in favor of passing this policy tonight and going back to the table prior to it coming back to give direction to the staff on utilization of some of those areas that we heard tonight. That's it.
Mr. Chair? Would the maker of the motion consider this? Because I'm all for banning the cellphones. That's not even a question. My concern is about the laptops and the iPads. Would you be, would the maker of the motion be amenable to amending the motion to approve it with the caveat that iPads and laptops are at the discretion, the use during instructional time are at the discretion of the principal?
I thought about that. Okay?
Can't, can't, can't do it here tonight. We have to put it off for, if you make changes tonight, it doesn't go into effect for 28 days.
So, that's, so, John...
And that's the reason why we would want to pass and then make changes.
I hear what you're saying. And if that wasn't the rule, that's where I would have gone, to try to get discussion on it. But I think that's it.
Is there, my only question is, is there a rush to pass it tonight and then make the changes or go ahead and table it and then make the changes and...
Well, because we would have to start over.
Right. We have to start back over.
Under, under rulemaking, we have to do the entire process within a 90-day window. If you don't do it, then you are outside of that and you have to start over anyways. So, to get it in within that 90-day window where we are, we have to get this passed. Otherwise, you might as well start over. And then you're going to have a student code of conduct that is not in line with your policies and you're going to run into issues.
Which wouldn't be the first time that's happened.
It's not something you can't overcome. It's just something the Board needs to be aware of in making a decision.
So, in my view, we could table it and in which case, we would stand with the policy as it, you know, as it stood. We could vote it down, in which case, the old policy would also stand. Or we could, we could approve it. And just so, I'm a nay either way. But if we could approve it and ask the superintendent to not enforce the part about other devices, specifically iPads and personal laptops, that part until we get it worked out. I mean, I think those are options.
It's not going to go into effect for 30 days. We can give that direction to the superintendent during that time and the next workshop. So, call a question.
All right. You ready for the fall roll call? All right. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Nay.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
And if I may, you guys, the policy is not going into effect for 30 days. We have an opportunity to come back. They expressed issues that they had that we're speaking to about the iPads and stuff. We're committing ourselves to go ahead and workshop and talk about it. So, it's not, there it is. I understand where you're going to go.
Yeah.
We have enough time. We have enough time.
Give that...
We have enough time.
Superintendent.
Yep. Right. All right.
Take the win.
Yeah. I think so. I mean, we heard. It was good. So, policy 5517, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who address, wants to, wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Fall roll call, please. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Okay. Policy 5517-01, is there anyone present who wishes to address that item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
We're good, first.
Second.
Any discussion? Fall roll call, please. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
All right. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes one item for the board review and may be brought back for addition at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken place on these items today. Does any board member wish to discuss this item? Okay. As Chair, I recognize the Board's attorney, Paul Gibbs.
All right. Board members, on behalf of Attorney Howard Marks, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation styled Moms for Liberty et al. versus the School Board of Brevard County, Florida et al., case number 6:21-CV-01849, 11th Circuit, case number 23-10656. Pursuant to 286.011 Florida statute known as the Government and the Sunshine Act, I am requesting an attorney-client session with the Board for the purpose of discussing strategy and settlement regarding the litigation. I will ask the Board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons intending to be published. If the Board approves, I will work with the Board clerk to coordinate dates for the attorney-client session, working with our counsel's availability, and provide notice of the meeting inclusive of scheduling a court reporter. As required by this statute, only the following individuals may be present: School Board members, Katie Campbell, Matt Susan, John Thomas, Jean Trent, Megan Wright, Superintendent Dr. Mark Rendell, Paul Gibbs, General Counsel Howard Marks, Burr Foreman, Jennifer Bridges, Burr Foreman. As required by the statute, I will ask a court reporter to record this session. Their notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the School Board. Upon the conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this case, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the Board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section 286-011 Florida statutes to discuss strategy of pending litigation. If there are no objections, I'll instruct our attorney to work with the Board clerk and schedule the attorney-client session as requested. Okay. We will take a short recess in order to prepare for the non-agenda item public comments portion of the meeting. We'll be back shortly.